Order our work session for February, budget work session for February 17th, 2021. Mr. Hamp.
Thank you ma'am. Cameron, do you want to set us up with the agenda slide and I'll begin the introductory remarks? Thank you. So this evening, our agenda is on the screen in front of you. We'll review again, as is our habit, the council budget retreat priorities. I think it's important that we keep these items in front of us as they guide us through the process. We'll also hear from Mr. Shaw, a budget impact recap, a COVID-19 budget impact recap. I think that'll be an important piece of information to keep in mind as we seek to understand and communicate about this particular budget, the FY22 budget. We'll get a glimpse into preliminary revenue and expenditure changes, a source of tension, which will be the theme of some remarks I provide a little bit later. We'll get some insight into supplemental requests. These are requests that when we ask the department directors to build a budget, we ask them to essentially provide information on a base budget, which is sufficient revenue to furnish essentially the current level of service or current level of programming. And then a supplemental budget, which identifies needs and costs to increase a level of service or move a project forward, a new project, a new initiative. And we think it's important, while oftentimes supplemental requests don't survive into the city manager's recommended budget, we do think, or I think, that it's an important part of the conversation as we move from departmental requests to city managers recommended ultimately to a council adopted budget. We'll also provide some information about the enterprise funds and rates in those distinct funds. And then a key feature of this year's budget process will be the real estate tax and the associated or the impacts from the general reassessment, and then we'll talk about next steps. So I referenced attention in the review of the agenda, and I think that is a theme that I've identified for consideration this evening. And I would challenge or encourage the council to consider the tension that exists between affordability and providing resources sufficient to maintain levels of service in our community, in our organization, and to provide sufficient resource to accomplish new investment, whether that's capital investment or programmatic investment or organizational investment such as salary and compensation, maintenance and improvement. Because I think as the staff begins to assemble a budget with information on both the revenue side and the expenditure side, there is, to our eye, obvious tension between what we might hope to accomplish for the organization and the community and what we will be able to accomplish, given certain assumptions about revenue. I think too, as we consider tension as a backdrop to evaluation of this information and strategies going forward, I think it's worth reminding all of us, that includes the staff, elected officials in the community, that as affordability has been an overarching and sometimes spoken, conspicuous priority for our organization and the community, and sometimes so, but it has produced sometimes the habit of confusing things and opportunities about what a city.
Jim, would you like to?
Yeah, I was gonna say, it appears as if Mr. Hamp is having a computer glitch, so I wouldn't presume to step into his introductory remarks. If it would please the council, I think we'll just move along to the next item on the agenda.
That'd be very nice.
All right, go ahead Cameron. So as Mr. Hamp mentioned, that, you know, we'll always return to the council's budget priorities. Hopefully tonight, the council ends up with a bit better overall sense of the budget and, you know, the opportunities and the stress that we're up against in trying to balance the budget. And so as we look at the budget priorities, I think one of the things that at the staff level we're trying to grapple with is whether we can make meaningful progress on all of these priorities. And as we talked about at our last council budget work session, that we put these into different tiers based on the system of voting that council used in the retreat. And if I'm to be candid, we're having a hard time to see a clear path to being able to address all of these priorities. I think we appreciate and that we would concur that these are the right priorities, the council has it right. The challenge is always just having the resources to do everything we'd like to do. I think as well, we would be remiss if we didn't acknowledge that we realize that you as a council and we as a community certainly have aspirations to do new things and take on new initiatives, but you also inherit quite a list of priorities. And we understand, in the conversations we've had, you know, for quite some time now, some of you for years, some of you, you know, shorter time, but that things like public safety and public education are also priorities for you, and that you inherit priorities in terms of providing for social services in the community. And we've talked a lot about regional jail facility and other things that are pressed upon us, you know, to address. So I think we want to keep coming back to these. I think, again, these are the right priorities and good priorities for us. And we're just, we're going to struggle to figure out how to address them all in a meaningful way in the upcoming budget as we see it today. I think one of the things we often do with budgets is try to understand them in comparison to prior year's budget. So I think whether you're an elected official or administrator, oftentimes when you hand it a budget, you kind of scan through and try to figure out, well, what's different about this budget than the previous year? And you might set an arbitrary amount, you know, anything that went up or down by 500 or 5,000 or $10,000, whatever the number is, you want to know, why did that go up or down? And I think we're particularly challenged in this year to do that because of the circumstances of last year's budget process and the budget that was adopted for fiscal year 2021, because we had developed what I think the staff felt like was a really good, solid budget, and we were making progress according to the council's priorities. And then, you know, a pandemic hits us, and we had to make some pretty dramatic cuts. And to balance last year's budget, so I think we want to remind ourselves of that as we start to look at the budget. And for instance, you'll see whether it's a revenue projection or an expenditure proposal, that the increase might look, you know, pretty great if you're comparing it to FY21, but it looks, you know, more what you would expect if you compare back to the original budget last year, you know, that things go up about 2% or so. And so it's one of those things where, you know, even as we're developing the current budget, we're not sure how bullish we should be about revenue projections. Last year, we took a pretty conservative approach. I think it has served us well enough that things have not been as bad as we had anticipated, but we're not sure that we're quite back to maybe what we would consider normal. And you see it in, you know, we, Mr. Hamp mentioned real estate tax, that the real estate market in Wayne'sboro has done really, really quite well in the last couple of years. And some of the other revenues, sales have been solid, meals have not been as bad as we thought, and, you know, but there's some level of uncertainty really as we're trying to assemble our revenue projections. So anything that you see tonight, consider preliminary. Go ahead, Mr. McCormick. The other point I would want to make about the current year's budget that we, the council adopted, is that we did a number of things, and I think we were clear that we couldn't replicate year in, year out, that we pulled out all the stops because we had a very short period of time to make some pretty drastic changes. And so as an example, that the current year budget FY2021 is balanced on about $1.8 million of either, well, it's all fund balance, but it basically either came from revenue stabilization or were monies that we would normally invest in capital improvements. And, you know, we took that action because we felt like, you know, we were in unprecedented times. And it was the sort of thing where I think for, you know, as long as I've been an administrator, we've advised councils not to use fund balance on recurring expenditures, and because, you know, the day comes where you have to either generate new revenue or eliminate that expenditure. So, so that, again, you start this budget in about a $1.8 million hole, and I say this budget, FY21 budget. And then as well, it just as this year, last year, council's top priority was addressing wage and compensation for the city employees. And we thought we were going to make progress, and that all had to be eliminated. In fact, not only was that eliminated, but we implemented, or at least budgeted for furlough days. And then, you know, we level funded the schools, that we sent them almost $500,000 less than would normally have been provided through the funding formula. And then you had departmental reductions of almost $1 million. And some of those reductions, if you're, you know, are things like if the pool isn't going to be open again this summer, or your library services are going to continue to be curtailed, then, you know, some of those reductions can stay in the budget. But more than half of that money was, were actually reductions in public safety. And, you know, those were, some of those reductions are not things that you, we would advise that the council continue in future budget years. So again, I think my point would simply be that, you know, as we're comparing to last year's budget, we're going to struggle a little bit because of how peculiar the budget was and how drastic the measures were to balance. And so I think in some ways, as we've been working as staff, we compare not only to the actual adopted budget, but the originally proposed budget, because it makes for perhaps a better baseline, a more normal baseline. And then you're seeing what you would consider to be, you know, more acceptable increases in revenues and expenditures. At this point, we'll turn our attention to FY22, and Mr. McCormick is going to walk us through at least some preliminary numbers to give you a sense of where we stand.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. The expenditure side, I'll start at the bottom on this slide. The expenditure side hasn't changed significantly. The one thing that we were able to update since the last time we met is under the health insurance increases, we had originally plugged about a 7% increase for health insurance for the second half of the upcoming budget year, that renewed on the calendar year, not a fiscal year. And we got final, or we received better preliminary numbers from ETNA and from MMA, and that was revised to 10%. So that's really the one change on the expenditure side of this from the last time, mainly because the budget committee is still working through budget requests from departments, and we're wrapping up the departmental things. One thing that I would add to this slide is in the expenditure portion, there's about $695,000 of miscellaneous increases that are contract increase, maintenance increases. Your audit gets more expensive and has an escalator in it every year, the OHEB can vary, or OHEB reports, minor repairs, and just various other items that aren't significant enough that you pull them out into a single line by themselves. But when you add them all together, it is about a 1% increase in the total budget. So your total expenditure at level one budget in pandemic might have on local government budgets, local government budgets, that we can now have trends from about six or seven months of being in this to provide a little bit better estimates that are more tailored to us. So for example, if you're looking at meals and sales tax, they're still lagging behind where we were and what we cut out of the city manager's budget from last year. They're better than what the conservative estimates that BML provided us were. So that's a good thing. That means that hopefully you don't have to work into your $1.7 million amounts as much as what you would have originally thought. But it's still not back to levels that would equate to what we would, a little bit better than the estimates from BML. But you also don't want to replicate that process and build a budget based on, based on fund balance next year. And so the end result is a base budget that's out of balance, about $1.1 million. This slide is, again, pretty much the same as it was the last time we spoke. These are the supplemental requests from the departments.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes, sir.
Can you back up just a minute? You're going kind of fast there.
Sure.
Back up to your last, your last statement was, how much out of balance are we?
About $1.1 million.
And is that based on what you're sitting there showing us on the primary revenue and expenditure changes?
Yes, sir.
The budget we're in right now?
That is correct. So you have a total expenditures of large items that can be identified of about 3.9 million and then 600,000, 700,000 of minor changes, miscellaneous changes. So your preliminary estimate on your expenditure increases in your base budget comes out to about 4.5, 4.6 million, and then about $3.4 million on preliminary estimate for revenue increases. So then that is about a $1.1 million difference.
So just in layman's terms, what you're telling me is that's how much we're short of what we thought we were going to bring in, and as opposed to the increases, that's where we're at?
Yes, so, yes, sir. It's the difference between the revenue estimates and the expenditure estimates at the, at a base budget level for 2022.
And the revenue, where did we fall short at the biggest part in what we had anticipated in revenues and we didn't get?
So this is projections for next year. So this is increases for next year compared to revenue, expenditure increases for next year compared to revenue increases for next year.
You confused me. I thought we're talking about this year's budget. And you're saying we're short this much in this year's budget?
This year being, I'm sorry, this year being fiscal year 2022's budget, next, the one that we're preparing now.
Okay. I'm sorry, I must have missed that. Okay.
Okay. Sorry about that. Any, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. And so the, these are the 2022, these are the supplemental requests that were received, received from departments. In aggregate, they total about $6.6 million, and the requests range from new positions in public safety to new vehicles for the police department, and also include your compensation and classification study, and some very other, various other departmental requests. One question that we received last work session to follow up on was kind of what's in the other line. And it's mostly positional requests from smaller departments, IT part-time employees, the registrar requested a position, and then the sheriff's department requested a position.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes, sir.
Where you come down, and your second one is compensation and classification study, a 3% pay increase. Is this just for emergency services or this for all city employees?
No, sir. That's all city employees.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. And so just one thing to note on this is any, the $1.1 million out in the base budget, or the variance in the base budget revenues compared to expenditure, any progress made towards these is going to make that unbalanced budget for 2022 a little bit, a little bit larger. So if you make progress towards the parks and recreation, if you pulled all of that through, it would make it further out of balance. And then to Mr. Allen's point, a quick reminder on what the compensation and classification study, what is in those figures. So last year, we broke those up into four different phases that, and this is for the, this is for the entire city. And the four phases were bringing everyone to a minimum base range and implementing a new salary scale. And that phase cost about $125,000 last year. If you assume some inflation on that, it would be, and then you add benefits into it, it would be about $156,000 in the general fund for this year. And that has the benefits and should work through getting a new pay scale implemented. Second phase was to bring everyone within 10% of market. That would be with the benefits, about $143,000 in the general fund. Third phase, which was to bring everybody to within 5% of market, would have been about $282,000, or would be about $282,000 in the general fund. And then the last phase, which would be to get everyone to market, would be about $403,000 in the general fund. So last year, the way that we approached that was, in the city manager's budget, was to suggest doing two of the phases part of the way through the year to break this down into a little bit more bite-sized pieces that can be tackled in a, in a single budget year. The other piece of that, $1.4 million, is a 3% raise for all employees as well, on top of the compensation and classification, because if you just implement the compensation and classification study, and then your neighbors give raises around you, you're already behind to get your compensation and classification. So the hope was to quote that number as well, just illustrate it. A 3% raise in the general fund with benefits is about $480,000 for the entire year. And then, so a per percent, so 1% raise for the entire year is about $160,000. And that does include the benefits for that figure. And so any questions on the, any of the supplemental requests?
Actually, Mr. McCormick, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
The fire department, that is not a West End fire station, I presume, is that other equipment or other personnel?
That is, sure. So that is six firefighters with benefits. So the firefighters, the six positions is about $192,000, and then the benefits with that is actually a little bit more than the firefighters themselves, by the time you do the health insurance and all of the aggregate and the new equipment into that. And then a part-time fire inspector of about $16,000 is what makes that up. So no, sir, that is not progress towards a West End fire station. That's strictly operational and personnel.
Okay, thank you.
So we have, we decided to, when you say the six positions, is that what you said, Mr. McCormick?
Yes, sir.
Are we adding a person to each company, or what are we doing there?
I would defer that one to Mr. Hamp, because I'm not sure, I'm familiar enough with how they run their shifts to do that justice on explanation.
So, Mr. Allen, we have not yet had the departmental budget meetings with either the police department or the fire department. But my expectation is that the additional staff will be added to the existing shift configuration. And what the purpose, and I will not do as good a job of explaining this or justifying this as the chief, but the purpose is to deliver more staff to a fire scene, and in doing so, improve suppression service at the scene, but also improve safety for our firefighters, that there are elements and strategy to fire suppression that we don't meet as, or fulfill to the extent that we would like. And there's both benefit in service and benefit in employee safety with these additional staff.
How many shifts do we have at the fire department? Isn't there four?
We have three.
You have three shifts, because they work the 24-hour?
Correct.
So you're, you'll be adding two people per shift?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions on the supplemental requests? So the, um, next slide moves away from the general fund.
Hey, Mr. McCormick?
Yes, sir.
I couldn't find my unmute button, I'm sorry. What is the police department, the 1.5 million, what does that cover?
So the bulk of that, our new police officer positions, about six of those, and that's going to be close to $500,000. New accreditation manager, honestly, the majority of it is new positions for accreditation managers, parking enforcement, more officers, school resource, training officers, and then the benefits that go along with that, the uniforms that go along with that, the meals that go along with training. And then there's also some replacement vehicles to work through, a take-home car program, six vehicles, which would be close to a half a million dollars by the time you did six.
So, Mr. McCormick, you're saying six new police officers, these are not added person to each shift, it's just six new positions at the police department?
Um, I think I would, again, defer to Mr. Hamp on that one, but we haven't had the departmental meeting to describe exactly how he would deploy those, deploy those, deploy those officers, or how exactly he would use them. We'll get that information on Friday. But Mr., I'm not sure if Mr. Hamp has any insight into how he might spread those across shifts or use them.
Sure. Mr. Allen, I think, again, allowing that we've not had the meeting, I think the majority of the positions are specialized in nature. So I think there is at least one SRO, there's a training position, there's an accreditation position, I think there's what the, what the chief described as a community resource officer. So I think the objective is to meet some of those special demands that are common, that you see commonly provided by municipal law enforcement agencies, that we're stressed to provide with the current configuration of staff. There may be, maybe one or two positions that get assigned to what we would regard as current base level service assignment.
Thank you, Mr. Hamp.
Yes, sir.
Any others on the supplemental requests? The, um, the next slide, it kind of So the, um, the next slide, it kind of encompasses, um, two years of, um, adjustments in the water, sewer, stormwater, your proprietary funds, the refuse fund. Um, last year during the city manager budget process, we had, um, some scheduled increases for sewer that we eliminated. And then we also had a 1.5 scheduled increase for 2022, um, that we've, that we've yet to bring and discuss. Um, we had a 15% scheduled increase for stormwater, which we eliminated in 2021 due to COVID-19. Um, that's one that I would point, point out and, and spend a little bit of time on, that it could potentially have an impact on the general fund. The stormwater pays the general fund for services, um, for services provided. One of the things that, um, we do every year is have a cost allocation plan. And, um, the way that, one of the ways that we had to balance the stormwater fund this year by not being able to do the full 15% increase was not fully reimburse the general fund for those services. So that's a, that's one that most of the time those 1.5% increases, um, the, the inflationary increases go discreetly to the fund. Keep up with inflation, keep up with employee costs, keep up with material prices that are rising. Um, the stormwater fund and the, the way that we looked at it, a little bit different by transferring them some debt and then needing to do some more operational things, um, needing to do some more operational things to keep up with things like TMDL, um, that one could have a little bit of a, um, could have a little bit of a general fund impact if you decided that you wanted to forego it in 2021 as well as, um, 2022. Uh, just for some perspective on that, the, the current, the current equivalent rate unit for the, um, stormwater fund is $3.96 and that would take the equivalent rate unit to $4.58. Um, the last increase that we had in last year's city manager budget was a dollar per month increase for the refuse fund, um, that was again eliminated due to the, uh, impacts or the, the uncertainty around COVID-19. Uh, most of that would have been scheduled to be put aside for equipment replacement and then, um, possibly some of it being set aside, um, for a new cell at the, um, for a new cell at the landfill that's, um, going to come at some point in the near future and probably be, or and is, and is going to be quite expensive. So your hope was to start saving some dollars towards that and then also get a lot of your equipment on a more regular replacement schedule. And then the last, um, item that I had to, to work through, um, which is the one I'm sure that we're all waiting for is the, the real estate tax, the reassessment, um, the lower tax rate calculation. One thing I would keep in mind on this is, um, this is preliminary. I ran the numbers, um, yesterday based on what, um, Ms. Harris had before she started doing the, um, appeals hearings. So she has appeals that she'll go through this month and then, um, she'll update her land book with her land values based on those appeals and then I'll rerun this calc. So you could see these things change just slightly. Um, the percentages changed just slightly, the lower tax rate changed just slightly. Um, so the way that the code is written and, and what has to be advertised during the public hearing and how you calculate the lower tax rate is you calculate the lower tax rate based on 1% higher than your previous year's appraisal value. So the tax assessment change went up about 9% and that doesn't include new construction, new buildings. That's just, um, property that we are, um, buildings and, um, assessments that we had prior year compared to buildings and assessments that we have current year. So that went up about 9% and then you take 101% of your prior year assessment and that comes up with a lower tax rate of 83 cents. And then that makes the tax rate difference make more sense of why it's a percent less because you're allowed 1% without having to do an advertisement or a public hearing and you don't have to factor that into your lower tax rate. And that's, um, prescribed by code, the, the method and the calculation that you run, um, to achieve those numbers. Um, this ta, this, um, increase will require, or not the, the, um, assessment change will require a public hearing. We currently have that scheduled, um, for April 12th, 2021. And then an advertisement for public hearing. This one's a little bit unique. It's a 30-day advertisement, not your normal 14-day advertisement. So we'll do that sometime, um, in the first week of March is when that advertisement would be shown in a newspaper, newspaper of, um, a newspaper that is, um, circulated and a prominent place in the building. So we will post it on the front door most likely.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes, sir.
You, looking at this thing here, you say the lower tax rate would drop down to, uh, 83 cents?
Yes, sir.
That is if you just did, where you said if you took the assessments that we had last year and the assessments we have this year, would that be like an equalization before we'd have to go to?
That is, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
That would be the equalization rate if you went down to 83?
With just one, um, point I might make is that you are allowed 1% growth without, uh, without calling it equalization. So the lower tax rate is 1% higher than the apples-to-apples comparison from last year. But yes.
Really would go down to 82, but with the 1% would go up to 83, correct?
Yes, sir.
And you said this, this does not include any of the growth that we've had in the last year?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
All right, thank you.
Mr. McCormick, just a clarification as well that the, this does not account for the advancement of the priorities from our retreat or the capital improvement plan objectives.
The, the base budget slide, is that what you're, is that what you're referring to? No, sir, it does not.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the, um, real estate tax, the lower tax rate calculation?
Uh, well, since, uh, Mr. Allen had asked about, it doesn't include the new development and new houses, do we have any estimate of what the value of those is going to look like as new development?
So I would point, um, the calculation that I would do for the revenue estimate does include those items. They're excluded for the lower tax rate because that's how it's prescribed by code. So if I were to flip back, um, just to make sure that we're all talking about the same, the same numbers, the, the, the real estate tax number here would include those items. So yes, I do have an estimate on how much those account for. It may take me just one second to, um, find it. I believe it was, sorry, calculation. So your, um, again, these are pre, um, pre appeals process, but the, um, 21 tax assessed value without permits was about, um, 18.9 billion. And then with permits was about two, I'm sorry, I quoted you the tax, was about 2.1 billion and without was about, or with was about 2.126. So let me say that again to make sure I didn't tongue tie myself. The total attack, the total taxable assessed value is 2,126,375,000 approximately. Um, and the, the new permits is about 26 million of that. And so last year that was your tax, your final 2020 assessed value was about 1.9 billion. And then you times that by your, um, by your hundreds and then by your tax rate and that's how you come up to, um, approximate your revenue.
Okay, thank you.
I guess one question I had, um, Cameron is, is to that first slide and because I'm about to pull up my coffee here. Um, when I look at the, on the expenditure side, it, it appears as though, um, we're, we're, we're doing a good job of sort of reconciling things that we had some deferment on, um, in the current fiscal year budget. And what I mean by that is the eligible streets increase, right? So we opted not to do that, but the replenishment is, is that you're anticipating that as an expenditure FY22. Likewise, for the furlough, uh, removal of furlough days, um, that that's an element that was, uh, a pack, you know, impacted and, and, and we, we identified and advanced in the FY, the current FY21 budget, but you're identifying it as something that we're going to correct now and, and, and roll that back into that cost of FY22. But there were also, you know, CIP expenditures, uh, that were investments rather that we had sort of, um, also paused, hit the pause button on that we're not identifying any of those pauses, um, into the replenishment and into the expenditure column, right? And I, I think I, I basically asking the same question again I asked before, that we're not. Um, but I just, I think, wanted to sort of characterize it as how it's, it's in my head, sort of rolling around, that there are other aspects that we deferred because we didn't know what the heck COVID was going to do to our budget and that we, we pumped the brakes pretty hard on some other things, but we're not really capturing all those things in that expenditure column.
So I think that the, um, negative revenue, the 1.7 million dollars that you're having to make up, that a good portion of that was department of capital would capture that in a way, but not in a direct expenditure way. So, um, when you deferred those capital items, the plan was to pay for them using fund balance from the 2019, um, fiscal year audit. And so instead of saying, we're going to take this and put it towards capital, we said that we might need this for operations because we're concerned about a lot of these revenue trends and what, what the, and what a lot of the people around the state are telling this, this might turn into. And so we paused those to hold in case we needed them to balance the budget this year. So there, you're, the direct revenue put towards capital, um, or the direct expenditure put towards capital, um, would be more of a fund balance issue because of you're just basically just rolling your prior year fund balance in to pay for your capital for the next year. And we didn't do that this year.
Understood. Thank you.
Mr. McCormick, i- if I might make one point of, of clarification that, um, you know, the real estate tax number that's reflected on this slide is at the current 90 cent per 100, um, dollars evaluation assessment. So, um, this, this does not take into account any kind of reduction in the current tax rate?
Probably we'd like to have a slide up there that would show the current 90 cent and then the equalization so we could compare to see what differences there will be.
In terms of the total dollar value?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Cameron, do you have an idea, an estimate of what a penny is going to be worth this year yet? 190,000 or so?
Yes, sir. So if you did, um, seven cents, that's kind of what I was running, seven cents on 190,000, um, 1.3, 1.4 million, somewhere in that range, depending on what your allowance for doubtful accounts and things like that turned out to be. But just raw re, raw 190, about 1.3, 1.4 billion.
So I think, um, it's a shame that I had perhaps the best introductory remark presentation prepared that you've only heard a small portion of. But Mr. Allen has honed us in on a key consideration that, um, we draw attention to, and that is, um, what's, what are we going to do? What is the council's appetite for generating revenue, um, vis a vis the real estate rate? And then what are priorities that we'd like to, if we were forced into a situation of limiting priorities or reprioritizing priorities, what is council's preference or how would you, um, order or affirm those priorities? And that will, those pieces of information will help staff, um, construct a budget that is well-aligned, um, with council's preferences.
Are, are you asking for a comment at this time, Mr. Hamp? Or are you, you know, just throwing it out there for us to think about and come back later at another date?
Well, much like we suggest that don't hold us to certain numbers as we understand it's early in the, um, process, if you have thoughts, guiding thoughts that you'd like to furnish this evening, I think they would be helpful for staff to receive, um, understanding that this, your thoughts might evolve on a particular issue as we work through the process.
Well, I'll be the first out of the gate on that. When I go out here and, and talk to business and constituents throughout our community and some of the, uh, communications that I have been receiving over the, uh, since the, uh, tax assessment went out, uh, I haven't talked to anyone yet that was in favor of, uh, the tax rate staying where it is compared to the 10% increase up to 38% increase. Uh, I think everybody that I've talked to, and I, I think when we got the notification a couple of weeks ago about the increase, uh, I was told maybe a 10 or 11% increase. Is that correct? Is that what we got from our, our sister?
I think that's an average across all property.
Well, it, all right, and that's an average across all properties. And I realize that out of the 11 or 12,000 properties we have, I've only received communications from 15 or 18 people. But, uh, I'm getting calls from businesses and from constituents that, uh, you know, seems like it's 18% up to 38%. Not getting a lot of people that I've talked to that's been in the lower range that would bring that average down. That doesn't mean it's not a case. It's just, I'm sure the people that's getting the lower ones aren't calling me complaining because theirs went down. But, you know, when I, I just in the standard of out here looking where our gas prices have jumped up from, you know, uh, $1.97 to 230, 240 some cents, uh, beefs hit, skyrocket again, building supplies are up, uh, the talk of, uh, raising the, uh, minimum wage. All of these things play into everyday life that everybody here is going to be affected by. And at this point, in listening to the local news, when we were talking about where we will be at, uh, in the next 12 months in reference to COVID, you know, President Biden said we're probably still being masked and doing what we're doing now, uh, come December. Uh, if that's the case, I don't see a lot of, uh, real opening up back to our, uh, retail sales and, uh, restaurants and places of shopping. I mean, uh, I still talk to a lot of contractors and, uh, technical people out here that say they're still having problems, uh, securing products because a lot of the factories are still shut down or cut back because of COVID, which driving everything to a slower pace, uh, setting things out where normally you could order something that would be delivered in a week or two weeks. Now we're two and three months out. I just, uh, I'm, I'm very uncomfortable in, in trying to forecast where we're going to be at, uh, for next year's budget. And, uh, I'll stay on the conservative side. And, uh, where I see right now, and I would start out of the gate saying, I would want for equalization. And with the added growth from, uh, reports that were seen in the newspapers, on TVs about how Waynesboro is growing and you ride around town and see different developments starting off with the, uh, possibilities of even more developments, uh, coming to start in this coming year, uh, I would kind of hope lean to maybe that's going to help us get through the next budget year with the extra added income as opposed to just, uh, taking it off the people's plates now that need it to run their families and their businesses. That's all I've got to say.
I'll go ahead and jump in too. I'd, I'd offer that, um, a couple of questions maybe first is, Mr. Hamp, can we, can we accomplish, um, the, uh, 3% wage increases for our city employees, uh, with equal, equalization of the rate?
Um, I don't immediately see a, a way to do that.
Okay. Uh, is there, is there a path to building the West End Fire Station, um, and completing construction without, with equalizing the rate? construction without, with equalizing the rate?
Probably not, sir.
Is there a path to completing and funding Sunset Park by equalizing the rate?
It certainly wouldn't be a recommendation from the manager to do that.
So I turn to a conversation that we had over, over two days, just three months ago, where that was the direction, and I'd like our city manager to sort of present that for our consideration and make decisions after that. Again, I absolutely appreciate the insight and conversation this, this evening because I think it's helpful to understand what the challenges that staff has been presented. I'm certainly not advocating and could probably, you know, settle in for an equalized rate, but I can't change the fact that we spent two days, just three months ago, having a conversation where we all participated and we all ranked those three things as our priority and now directing staff to do the opposite. So I would respectfully offer that we, we let staff continue to do what we directed them to do three months ago and develop a budget, and if we get the sticker shock, then we kind of adapt from there.
Mr. Hamp, you said we can't go forth with the West End Fire Station if we neutralize our tax rate?
I said I didn't see immediately a way to do that, no, sir. Well, let me, let me qualify that. If, if, I think it then becomes a conversation of what do you not want to do? We would be eliminating expenditures, eliminating programs or services to create the financial capacity to do that project.
Well, when I sit here and listen to you go add employees to this department, add employees to that department, what other departments do we plan to add employees to in this coming budget if we've been asked to?
Well, let me be clear on that. At this point, we've not developed a budget recommendation. We think it's important, or I think it's important to at least inform the council of the requests that we receive. The base budget comparison, the chart that we've spent probably more time on with the revenues on top and the expenditures on the bottom, is simply a reflection of the current budget. It doesn't include new positions that have been asked. And frankly, we put up the slide about supplemental requests to simply inform the council. When we give, when I give instructions to our department directors, generally it's tell us what you need in your best judgment as a professional to deliver service safely and distinguish between what is the base level of service that we currently enjoy and what would be considered an enhancement of level of, level of service. And those enhancements fall into the supplemental slide. And quite candidly, very, very few of those requests make it or survive into the manager's recommended budget. I would say, I don't know, Mr. Shaw, if you said 5%, if I said 5%, would that be about right?
If, Mr. Hamp, if 5% make it in, it often means something else has been cut or eliminated in the base budget. And so to expand on that idea that, for instance, with the fire department, their request for six firemen has been a standing request from fire chiefs here going back a couple of chiefs. And it essentially is derived from fire safety standards, ISO standards and so forth. It says when you respond to different types of events and the fire department responds to emergency medical events or they respond to a car accident or to a structured fire, that you should deploy a certain number of apparatus, certain type of apparatus to that event, and they should be manned by, you know, individuals. And so what the fire chiefs tell us is that you, we are not able to do that. We're not able to meet those standards with current staffing. And so that, that request is not one that's new this year, it's one that we've seen in past years. And so when we look at supplementals, that yes, it's very difficult to pull those in because they may mean that it's a level of service above what we currently provide. They don't always mean that it's not a level of service that we should be providing. But we show you that supplemental just to give you a sense of what the professionals that we employ in various departments tell us that they feel like they need to provide services. And so I'll use another example in economic development, there's, Mr. Hitchens has asked for about $600,000 in supplementals. He would like to have a marketing person, he's recommended that for several years now, but about $300,000 of that was to respond to some of the council's desire to amp up the downtown redevelopment efforts. And so he felt like $300,000 to either provide low interest loans to renovate or to take on, you know, initiate a renovation through the EDA in the downtown area, would be responsive to the council's desire to, that was expressed in retreat. Did we look at it and will struggle to say, well, that's something that we can pull through because we don't see where there's $300,000 immediately in the base budget as it exists. Citywide, it could be eliminated. So I think it's kind of a rambling way of saying, when you look at those supplementals, and we talked about what our chief has asked for, the police chief has asked for new positions, we're not at a point where, you know, those things have made their way to a recommendation from the city manager. These are, these are what we look at in preliminary budget and we're, we're still weeks away from coming to the council with the manager's proposed budget. One thing while I've got the floor that I wanted to perhaps add as a point of clarity, it's been brought up a couple of times, Dr. Hoster asked a question, I think Mr. Allen has pondered what's the value of new growth in the community? And so the number that Mr. McCormick was telling you is what is the, the real estate value? But in the current revenue projection, we have the real estate, about $230,000 is actual new growth. That's what comes to the city's coffers from that growth.
What was that amount again, Mr. Shaw?
About $230,000.
Thank you.
Is what new growth amounts to in, in that, that budget line. And the remainder is, the bulk of it is from the reassessment value.
So Mr. Hamp, I think you were asking for recommendations or feelings, but, you know, the pay study's big on me. I don't think you're looking to do the whole 1.466 million dollars in one chunk, right? That's going to be phased in?
We generally consider this would have to be phased in over several years, yes, sir.
And six police cars or $600,000 for the take home? I, I think that pays for pretty much the 3% pay raise if we got away with those take home cars.
Well, I think to keep in mind though, that those cars don't exist in the, in the budget, base budget at this point, they're.
Right, no, they're, they're in the supplemental.
Right. So what the challenge becomes is you look at that supplemental page and start to, if you can identify priorities and pull them into the base budget, then the staff will work to either align revenues with expenditures or identify, and I think it's less likely that this is the case, or identify reductions that can be made, but we've been identifying reductions for a decade or more.
Yeah, well, I, I think where I stand, I would like to see something done with that compensation classification study and start moving our employees forward. That's my opinion, you know, on the, on the supplemental sheet. And I want somebody else bring their feelings in on that.
I would just like to add that, you know, during the retreat, I don't think any of us had an idea that, that we would still be where we are today with COVID. And we don't know, we don't know what the future is going to hold, we don't know what that looks like. I know in the business that I help manage, we've seen an increase in, in food costs. And so we have to pass that on to the customer. So I do know that, that the price and cost of living is going up. And I personally feel a little uncomfortable considering keeping the tax rate the same or not considering equalizing the tax rate when I know that there are people struggling, there are people that have lost their jobs, have been laid off, and, and we may see more of that. So I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable with a tax increase, to be honest with you.
Well, I, I would, I would just echo that too. I'm, I'm not certainly advocating for a tax rate increase. I'm just saying that we, it was three months ago, we gave direction, we won't vote on this for three more months. So the same amount of time has passed since we gave the direction to this moment, three more months will pass until we take action, thereabout. And that I think we should forge ahead and then make decisions as, as elected leaders in the community as to what we should adapt to beyond. That said, I mean, I don't think we've sent staff on a wild goose chase, right? I mean, we haven't, we didn't, we, 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 we refined and narrowed our focus in that, in that discussion. I mean, I, I count four, four boards, I took a photograph of it, four boards with, you know, five or six different ideas on each of those boards, and the thing that advanced were three. So I think we've already narrowed our focus, and again, they're not things that we, that we sort of passed on. And I don't think it would be something too terribly difficult for staff to pivot away from should, once the conversations have been had with the department heads, once the, all the final numbers are kind of coming in, that as a council, we can then have a, you know, an informed and intelligent conversation about choices. And maybe some of those choices are, what do we not want to do? But I think we owe it to, to our staff to, you know, stay on the course for what we said were priorities just three months ago.
Well, I would add that for the last 12 years, I've sat in budget meetings and I've heard about what we'd like to do, where we'd like to be at, and what we would like to increase. And I don't think there's been a person on city council that doesn't feel like that's what we want to do. We, I mean, we'd like to have top pay, top benefits, all paved roads, all infrastructure going strong, we'd like to have all that. I'd like to have it, but it comes to a point of what can you pay for? And you talk about what we talked about three months ago, and today, my opinion probably has dampened a little bit from what we talked about three months ago, because I see where we're headed at as a nation. And I see all the money being spent out through our federal government that's sooner or later going to have to come pay due. It's, it's there, and, but yet money keeps rolling out and, but I don't know what's there backing it up. I worry about only our locality here, and I worry about the pennies and nickels and dimes that we spend and proud to be a conservative, proud to try to say, we're going to do the best we can for every dollar we take from the citizens to give it back to them. There's things that I think we need to press forward on, compensation. Mr. Mayor, I agree with you. I think we stepped up last year with, hey, starting at the police department. I think there's things that we're doing in the steps that we're allowed to do, but also this year, I think is going to be a trying time for our nation and for our state and for our local community here. And I'm just trying to be very, very conservative with it and not stepping on anybody's toes, not disagreeing with anybody. I think we all want to do what's best, but I just want to put it out there, this is how I feel right now.
And I can certainly respect that, Mr. Allen. You know, the, we've had sort of two thoughts valid about, one is equalization and one is not changing the tax rate. Certainly there is lots of space in between. And, and I think the conversation about where our priorities are going to be, and as you say, the compensation is, I think, a priority for all of us, and where those numbers fall and what options we have. So I would tend to agree that let's move forward in identifying and trying to stick with some of the things we have highlighted, but then of course, facing the fact that, you know, a, a large tax increase during a pandemic when people have been displaced and people have lost income and jobs is certainly a very tough thing to, to take on. At the same time, this is the way that the revenue is generated. You know, when real estate values go up, real estate values go up. And we've talked about in the past, of course, that doesn't put money in somebody's pocket, but you know, that is the, the way that the, the overall value of the city is, has increased. So I'd like to see some numbers, you know, looking at how the phases of the compensation might fit into a budget and then see what the ramifications are. So I'm not ready to commit to, to, you know, any one rate at this time. I'd like to see those numbers and then have the difficult conversation about, so how do we value that and what do we do going forward?
But Dr. Hoster, I would disagree with you in what you just said because you said there's a lot of error in between the tax rate now and what it was. There is no in-between. What it was last year is what it cost the taxpayers. What it is this year with the values going up, there's a big difference that the people are going to have to pay out of their pocket. There's no, there's no difference, there's no in-between. This is a increase from yesterday to today. There is no difference.
Well, I think you misunderstood my point, sir. What I said was there is a difference between 90 cents and 83 percent, or 83 cents, which I think was what the equalization rate was. So you cannot.
I'm just looking at the difference of what's coming out of the people's pocket. That's the only difference I'm looking at.
Well, but, but do you understand my point, sir? That we're talking.
I understand your point of being the difference between that rate and this rate.
There is space in between those two numbers. And again, that will be a conversation, a difficult conversation we're going to have to have, but I think we need to look at the priority rather than make a commitment at this time to not look at it.
Yeah, I would just agree that so the, the delta for the short household is about a $220 annual increase in our real estate taxes, or it could be a $20 increase. That's the space between, but we can't have that conversation until, again, three months ago, we said three specific items, not 20, but three specific items that add value, the same businesses, the same folks that, the staff that we want to support with the compensation study, we all want, we also want to, we, but COVID has taught us anything, it's taught us that we need to have a separate, a separate facility to, to house our, our firefighters with the West End Fire Station, and that's not free. And, and so we either have to, you know, make draconian cuts into what we have or, or generate additional revenue. And, you know, those, of those sorts, it's, it's either, I, I think it was very easy to come to a place last year of hitting the brakes pretty hard, not doing a rate increase, not, not making those adjustments, deferring some of these very same things that we've talked about for, for a number of years. And we did that out of an acknowledgement to, to the unknown of COVID. But again, I, you know, we're, we're not going to be voting on it for a couple of months. And I'd, I'd hate for, just because we start seeing a number and we start getting phone calls from people, you know, at, at the end of the time, I know, I, I haven't gotten a thousand phone calls. So I've been, I, I think we need to, to, to move forward, let staff do the work that we tasked them with doing, bring us the numbers, the difficult decisions, and let's, let's, let's talk about it. And let's, let's, let's figure out what's, what's best for the city.
And I think, Mr. Short, that what we were asked to do was to give our thoughts and the, and the direction we want to see. And so I think that's what, what you heard tonight.
Well, let me, let me make it clear, I'm all for going for a West End Fire Station. And I think there's a way that it can be done, that we can start the process. that we can start the process and get to that point. Mr. Hamp says we can't do that if we equalize. Me and Mr. Hamp will have a few conversations in the next coming days. But I like to think we can. I like to think with the growth that we have, and I understand every year that I've been here, we have growth and we have more revenue. And we think, well, we're a little bit ahead. And then we find out, well, social services costs went up, health insurance costs went up, jails costs went up. Everything goes up. And it seems like from when we were at thirty some million and now we're in fifty some million and we're having the same conversation that I had the first year I was on city council. We need more money. I'm not going to argue that point. It's happened year after year after year. I know Dr. Hoster sitting there going, here's negative Bruce coming around the corner again. I'm just saying, I've been there, I've rode this horse, I understand it. I'm not saying, you know, like the past council people, we don't want to do anything. We don't want to build a water treatment plant. We don't want to build a sewer treatment plant. I realize we got to move forward. I, I understand that. So I want all of y'all to, I'm not against that. Just make that clear.
Thank you, Bruce.
So I think the next steps are, we have another work session scheduled for March the third. Our intention is to focus on the CIP debt and miscellaneous items. A reminder that in April, on the fifth, you'll receive actually a manager's recommended budget. And then as Mr. McCormick mentioned, on April 12th, we've scheduled the equalized tax rate public hearing. I would like to say thank you. I appreciate the candid responses. That's, that's as much feedback and guidance as you furnished in recent memory, and I think it's helpful to move forward. And we'll certainly continue to respond to the best of our ability to the guidance that we've received and work with you to refine, refine a path forward.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you.